Mike Corje, would you lead us in the flags and retreat?
This is to the paddock of United States of America and to the Republic and nation undergone indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to make the way? Hey, we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Bonner.
Here.
Mayor Protime Castillo.
Here.
Councilmember Green.
Yeah.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Mayor Aaron Kranz.
Here.
For the record, Mayor Protime Castillo is joining this meeting via teleconference. Mayor Protime Castillo, can you please confirm that you can hear me clearly?
I'm fine, how are you?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. City Manager, are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes tonight.
Thank you. Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. In this case, we need a roll call vote, I believe.
Yes, Councilmember Bonner.
Aye.
Mayor Protime Castillo.
Aye.
Councilmember Green.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Kranz.
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Add a city clerk. Do we have any public comments?
No, Mayor, we do not have any public comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. Then we're going to move on to business items. And I think that's probably your turn now.
I guess it is. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, we're here for one reason tonight, and we're pretty excited to be able to bring this study to you. We started discussions of doing this study last fall, and then on December 4th, the council authorized moving forward with the study. So we've been, the study's been in progress for six or seven months now, and it's been a lot of hard work on the part of our consultants and city staff. As we all know, for probably over a decade now, the city has struggled with skyrocketing public safety costs. And our contracts with both the Sheriff's Department and the Fire Department have, in the past, led the city into structural budget deficits. And so, over the past couple of years, staff has been, and the council, have been actively looking for solutions to those problems. And one of the chief identified potential solutions is the formation of a city-owned and operated fire department. Back in 2016, ESCI did a shortened version of a feasibility study on whether it might make sense to start a city fire department, but it was, the city at the time asked for kind of an abbreviated version, a lower budget and quicker turnaround version. And while it provided some interesting information, it really wasn't a complete picture of what it would take to start a fire department in Canyon Lake. And so, the study before you this evening builds on what was done in 2016, but also is just a much more in-depth, complete look at what it would take in terms of startup costs and how such a department would be organized. We have with us this evening consultants from ESCI, and I guess I don't need to really say a whole lot more, we'll have a discussion, we'll have a presentation from ESCI, then we'll have discussion. We're not intending on making any decisions this evening. This is primarily a time to receive the report, understand it, discuss it, and then decide what, you know, we'll think about what the next steps are after that. So with that, I'd like to invite Kurt to come up and start the presentation.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Glasses keep fogging up, sorry. I'd like to kind of start this off by thanking your city manager and council, and all the folks that were generous with their time, including each member of the council, members of your community, who took the time to give us input when we were doing the stakeholder portion of the report, which you'll see is quite extensive. But I'd also like to acknowledge the team. As a project manager, it's my job to match the team to the project, and I'm very proud of the group that we brought to your project. Jeff Pachira was brought to the project because of his experience building the Northwest Fire Protection District in Arizona, and some interesting challenges post-bankruptcy up in Stockton. And then Frank Blakely is our risk subject matter expert, and he did a pretty deep dive, as you'll see the risk section in there. And then Dave Schmidt was our GIS analyst, and there's some interesting dynamics going on with the, with some of the analysis that we'll go into a little bit when I get to that section. And then Randy Parr, who is on the phone. Randy is the CPA on the team, but he's also a working fire chief. He's built a fire department from all volunteer to very robust combination department. So all in all, you've got 150 years plus on this team, and I think if I calculated in Councilmember Green's years, we'd probably go way over that. No offense, sir.
That's all right. It's all right. It's a fact.
Did he say you were old?
Yes, I'm old.
Nicely put, though. Okay. So the purpose of the study is pretty clear. We got our direction, we worked out a scope of work, and it's to analyze the community risk factors. We always try to take a look at the risk as we balance the recommendations. Take a look at the contract services, what's currently being provided, and there's quite a bit of information in there. And then design a conceptual fire agency. A lot of analysis on financial, as you'll see in there, and that's why we have a CPA on the project. And then dynamic deployment models, which is a little tough when you have a system as thin as this one, as close to the bone. And provide a comprehensive transition plan, which is in there, and Jeff will go over that as well. So we prepared it in accordance with the scope of work. In your study is an evaluation of the current conditions, the financial resources, cash requirements, stakeholder input, options, there's two options in there for your consideration, and overall evaluations, conclusions, and recommendations. I will be honest with you, there's not a recommendation from your consultants in this report. I feel very strongly that, given the options we're putting in front of you, those recommendations are policy-level decision, and it's out of the hands of a consultant. So it is a thorough review and assessment of risk. Some of the risk factors are kind of interesting. Didn't surprise any of you, I'm sure. Response capability, apparatus and facilities. Councilmember Green helped us, because of the COVID lockdown, get through some of that. Current level of service that's provided to the community, and we'll talk a little bit about the data, and then recommendations for options. So during the development of the community expectations, the city made it very clear what they wanted us to do. And actually, input from the council, input from neighboring municipalities, as well as the property owners' input, was all taken into consideration as we wrote this report. Jeff?
Hi, good evening. Jeff Pachira. The community, as you know, the population estimation from the Census Bureau is 11,267. Riverside County Fire Protection Agreement for the county is a full-time fire department, as you know, 94 staff stations. Canyon Lake Station 60 has three firefighters on duty. One of them could be a captain, and the others would be engineer firefighters. The services provided, they do, it's a full-service fire agency. It's multi-risk. It is one of the well-staffed systems in the region, and it provides a plethora of services when you need it, from disaster to minor response. CAL FIRE is your service provider, and it is a robust system, including the state system that would come in on a large incident. So Canyon Lake, as you know, is a master-planned community, developed starting in '68, comprising 4.6 miles, 15 miles over that is lake shoreline. Incorporated in 1990, the community has a current population, 2010 census of 10,561, 2018 estimated 11,267. The current community, as we noted, is 4.6 miles, 3.9 is land, and 3/4 of a mile is water, or 16% of the community. I'm sorry, point six. Yeah, 16%. Here's a map of the community itself that we, in the project that we worked on. And we show the adjacent communities, which align with the conversation we'll have relative to a multi-agency approach or a auto-aid boundary drop system with other fire stations and communities. There's your fire station on the north end, and as we'll go through the data later on, you'll see that the station doesn't match the location of where the calls are, and we'll have a conversation on that. There's your fire station on the north edge. Prior to incorporation, Save Canyon Lake in 1990 relied on CAL FIRE as a county fire protection system through the county services. And then when you incorporate it, you entered into a master agreement with the county to provide those services, and then you started paying for it out of your coffers. CAL FIRE, through that contract with the county, is your provider, even though you have a contract with the county itself to provide those services. Here are the risk assessment highlights. This is generally a density, this is a general, a density map. Higher densities in the south and southeastern portions of your community, lower densities in the north portions. This will align with the number of calls that you have generated by the community members, and there's a hotspot map that will show most of your calls are south, where the higher densities are. The Bureau of Land Management is those parcels on the north side of Station 60, with a small parcel on the far west side across the lake. The commercial occupancies in the, in your community are mostly on the south side, along with your community center, central part, and with the restaurant in the middle part. These risks, if you will, are those high insurable properties, other than the very large homes that you have of highest assessed value and risk. There is a hotel, some restaurants, and obviously a number of businesses in the south side. You've had fires in this community before, in the commercial center, that you've experienced, and some of you were here when that happened. Here's your wildfire risk map. We did have a conversation with the Bureau of Land Management about what would happen if you had a fire on any of those parcels that are in the Bureau of Land Management jurisdiction, and they essentially mutual aid with CAL FIRE to respond into those areas since the Bureau of Land Management doesn't have a fire station anywhere close. So what does that mean for you under the premise of if you had your own fire department? The Bureau of Land Management states that you would have to enter into an agreement with them, the cooperator, cooperators agreement, in that they would ask you and CAL FIRE to respond to those incidents at no cost to the city. And it's just another agreement that you would have to create with the Bureau of Land Management. Kurt, do you want to do questions? Any questions yet, before we get into some other stuff? Okay?
So I promise you, we talked a little bit about data. We pride ourselves on utilizing facts, facts, figures, and data to come up with recommendations in our analysis. We're not, we're not consultants that'll tell you that I've been doing this for 40 years, and I think you ought to do it this way, unless we can back it up. The data that you see in your report, which is much more extensive than I have in the PowerPoint, was, the raw data was provided to us by CAL FIRE. And then our GIS analysts perked that down into what you see in the report. I do have a level of concern for the data, particularly the response data. When you, when you get into the response data, you'll see cumulative. It appears that CAL FIRE, system-wide, is taking 10-plus minutes to get on scene. I don't know if you're experiencing that locally, but that's what the data proves out. One of the challenges with the data is CAL FIRE didn't really, doesn't really segregate out Station 60 with much of the data. We were able to boil some of it down, but from call processing to the turnout time, to the response, to the travel times, it appears that that is system-wide. So, two years, I know the report says three, I apologize for that, that's one of the ones I want to fix. We asked for three, we got two, it's okay. Really not a lot of variance in the two years, and when you have a built-out community, there's not going to be a lot of variance. You know, no secrets here, there's no, no science, or not any magic here. When you look at the demographics of the community, which is in the report, you're running 80%, 80.99, and I will, I will tell you, that is hot. A lot of people in the fire services are going to tell you, we're running 90% EMS calls. When we get in and boil them down, it's usually between 67 and 78, and somewhere around in there. So we boiled it down, you see all the different components that make up that piece of pie, and you're right there at 80%. We're also used to seeing 2% to 4% structured fire calls, with about 2% of those really being IDLH or immediately dangerous to life and health. You're very low on this, very safe community. Response workload, this is where we start to break down some of the information. I'm fairly comfortable with this information, because it kind of tracks with the community. And this is by month. So first you look at it by month, and this would have been for 2018. And I did find it interesting that December is your busiest month. Not a lot of variance, but you see December does peak up there. And I, I don't have an explanation for it, but I don't, I don't live here. I'm sure you guys have some sort of a feel for what may be going on. Maybe it's a festival, maybe folks are coming out to the lake a lot, I don't know. Incident count by day. Your busiest day is Saturday. And in the report, we do make a comment that potentially that is, has to do with the lake. Somebody did a posting, I think it was 4th of July, they put a little video clip on Facebook. Looked like there was quite a few people out at the lake before, unless it was last year's clip. Incident count by hour, you know, there's no, there's no surprises here. You live in the community, you commute back and forth to the community, those of you who commute. 60% of your calls are occurring between 9:00 AM and 7:00 PM. And it peaks at 11:00. Peak is a little interesting, because in some communities, what I see is it ramps up right about that 7:00 or 8:00, and it literally stays there until about 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock at night. So you've got some movement going on. Calls are typically driven by actions of people. So the more people that are on the road, the more people that are out shopping, the more people that are recreating, they're going to drive your calls. All right. We have a fairly high level of confidence in this data. It's utilized, it utilizes model runs with ESRI software and mapping, and we, we use speed limits, and we use existing roads. This footprint right here is your four-minute travel. Now I want to emphasize the word "travel," because that means the crew has already gotten in the engine, put it in gear, and they're rolling. So that's your footprint for four-minute travel. In the report, you'll note that it says 29.7% of your service area can be served in a four-minute travel time. Why do we run a four-minute model? Because that's one of the NFPA objectives that we work with. So Jeff and I looked at the four-minute model, and said, let's, let's dive a little deeper. So this is a four, a six, and an eight-minute model. So once you expand to six minutes' travel, you're now covering 93.2% of the city. Once you stretch to an eight-minute travel model, you're at 99%. What's acceptable is a policy-level decision. I can spout the performance objectives per NFPA, Centers for Public Safety Excellence, et cetera, but what we like to recommend is whatever performance model works for your community, your community, and is acceptable to your citizens, is the objective. But I will tell you, once you add the front side, the front side is call processing, and when you take a look at the call processing time in the study, it's a bit, bit long. And then you take a look at the turnout time, and that's the time the alarm goes off in the station till they roll, and you add it to these, it's pretty long. Now, what I have found, when we've analyzed turnout time in other communities served by dispatch centers run by CDF, because of the way they dispatch with their callback system, et cetera, there's some, there's some nuances there that need to be addressed. It may not be taking them that long to get on the road, because they put the dispatch out, they tone the station out, and then they start their callback system, and they don't show the unit in service until they've acknowledged on the callback, and usually they're already on the road. Not defending them, just saying that's what I've run it to before. All right, the deployment system, the deployment system here is designed around the utilization of closest resources first. So when you look at the study, it will, it will share with you that, per the analysis, Station 60 is running less than half of the, of the calls originated in the city. It's because they're using a closest resource first model. So when you look at the map, you'll see the station up in Manife is running the prominence of your calls down there in the south, is that east or west? East, east end, and then the Alson Ring is coming up into the south end. So when you, when you look at the breakdown in the study, you will see that there's a heavy reliance from the system perspective on your automatic aid partners. And that's just, when the county designs a system with all their partners, with all their contractors, they put it in as if everybody is one, and that's how they're running it. We did attempt to get some data for outbound. Outbound meaning how many times the Canyon Lake engine was included on an alarm to the neighbors, because when you run a system like this, your first alarm includes all the closest resources first. So there's a good chance, if we were able to get that data, you would see that Canyon Lake engine is, is actually going out and servicing your neighbors as well. As a matter of fact, before tonight's meeting, I was sitting down with Pat Walsh, the new police chief of Manife, and he shared with me that he was at a wheat field fire just across the city limit in the county, and Canyon Lake engine was there. That tells me you're definitely on the run cards outside. So this is why those two stations are, are running as many of your calls as they are, because they're the closest resources to your hotspots. This is where your calls are being generated. So, you know, there is some discussion that probably should take place, depending on future plans for the community. In the event you wanted to provide better service from the Canyon Lake station, you might wish to relocate it. We ran a model, a relocation model, and it, it works out that if you bring that station down and put it closer to the hotspot, you'll get much better coverage on, on a, on a high percentage of your calls. Why do we spend so much time analyzing call processing, turnout, and travel time? It's really pretty simple. People plus tools plus time equals effectiveness. And I don't care if you're talking about a structure fire, or a drowning, or a cardiac call, this formula is the same. I mean, this is, this is really a simplistic approach. However, people, trained emergency responders, training certifications are important, tools, apparatus, and reliable equipment, and the time duration between the start of the event and the intervention. In some of our standards of cover studies, we actually measure the amount of time it takes the dispatcher to answer the phone. And effectiveness is the degree to which harm caused by the incident is limited. More people, more tools, more time, you're going to limit damage. So these are not our, these are not, these are not our numbers. This comes from NFPA, and it comes from the Centers for Public Safety Excellence, but it also comes from experience. We pretty much know that low risk is going to take less people. That's a, that's a no-brainer. And when you look at a three-person engine company, the only thing you're going to be able to do from a low risk is emergency medical service and rescue. If you have a major motor vehicle accident, you're going to need help. Every structure fire, if you have, if all you have is one engine, you're going to need help. And that help comes from your automatic and mutual aid partners. Let's talk a little bit about the difference between automatic and mutual aid. I'm sure Councilmember Green is well familiar with this. So automatic, in essence, as soon as your, a call comes in in Canyon Lake for the closest resource, it's dispatched. You don't have to ask for it, it happens automatically. As soon as there's a report of a possible fire, the first alarm is struck, everybody's notified almost simultaneously. Mutual aid, much like a disaster defibrillation. Mutual aid, you, you need to make a decision, there's a decision point. And that decision point is, you've decided, based on the call, that you can no longer handle it with your resources. So you make a mutual aid request. The difference, obviously, between mutual aid and automatic aid, automatic aid is automatic. Mutual aid or request is made, and depending on the system, and I'm not saying that's the system here, but depending on some systems, the approval for the mutual aid has to come from a chief officer. So mutual aid is slow. So statewide, when we're moving stuff up and down the state, that's all mutual aid. Those orders are being placed, those orders are being processed, those orders are being approved, and we're moving resources. Jeff?
So through the analysis of a lot of information that you have in the report, we come up with findings based upon the information collected, provided, and conversations had with the community members and council members and stakeholders, essentially. We know that with the revenues to be generated by the EMS subscription fee recently submitted and in place, the Canyon Lake General Fund is sufficiently funded for the fiscal year. And we know that, to me, that the contractual relationship with CAL FIRE becomes more affordable, I'll use the term "more affordable," in the sense that your balanced budget comes into play with the CAL FIRE contract, or Riverside County contract. Should the city have any structural deficit occur with the COVID incident continues to play out, and you have eroding property values, you have to have a conversation then, what are you going to be doing with your, your fiscal funding? We know that a facility is available to the fire department to serve as a fire station, and although it could be located better to serve the community, you do have a fire station in place. The current services provided by CAL FIRE Riverside County contract cannot be replicated without a regional approach with neighboring agencies. You just can't match it with a single fire station approach that the services you receive today. A standalone fire department cannot economically and operationally provide for the same level of response times, response special teams, moderate to heavy wildfire incidents, structural response, on and on. Simultaneous EMS dispatches, you had two in the last two years, each year, two each year. That means somebody would have to wait for service. That means somebody would have to wait for service if you had your own fire department or you called mutual aid, if you did not have the auto aid boundary drop system in place. Auto aid boundary drop is a negotiated piece with your neighbors, and they have to agree to it based upon the criteria established in an agreement. It's just not a given that you would have, that you have today, it's a given. Mutual aid requests, as Kurt noted, are not automatic response and can be denied or delayed. Automatic aid will provide the coverage, but the political pressures, as noted, for providing is a perception of imbalance of support to the Canyon Lake community, and that may be a barrier. In discussions with AMR, they are willing to discuss enhanced medical response services to Canyon Lake for a price, and that price would be determined based upon the level of services requested. It'd be above and beyond what you receive today if you wanted enhanced services. Riverside County will allow Canyon Lake to seek a multi-year agreement with CAL FIRE Riverside County unit. CAL FIRE can provide a multi-year agreement in discussions with them to you, utilizing the same cost and process, processes currently in place. Riverside County has offered to continue to provide fleet maintenance, which is a part of your county service fees that you pay, as well as logistics and dispatch services for a fee. In discussions with Murrieta Fire Department, they are willing to discuss opportunities to provide dispatch, fleet, and/or management services, should you decide to create your own fire department. The city of Manife is relocating their Quail Valley Station south to Audi Murphy Ranch, and that's planned in two to three years as that develops out, and when it does, it actually improves that level of service into the southern and eastern parts of your community. In discussions with your neighbors, there are opportunities for regional fire protection services to be developed. And when I talk about regional fire services, that's like a combined fire system, a fire authority, a large fire district, those sorts of systems that they would be interested in discussing with you, should that opportunity arise in the next few years. They have to wait for a few years to get through the projects that they're doing, but they're saying three to five years might be a good time for them to start talking.
Questions yet? Is there else? Talked about some options. And Randy, you're on the line, right?
Yes, I'm on the line.
Okay. So our CPA, I've asked him to join us on the call, because the snapshots that we have in the PowerPoint are a very broad stroke of some of the data. So when we get to those, I'm going to ask him to walk us through those, at least walk us through the ones that are in the slides. So Option A, I think this is kind of a no-brainer option, you've already seen some of the findings. We've identified a single station department cannot duplicate the resources, the depth, et cetera. Response times throughout the city are quicker due to the systems approach. And with, and I did, this comment came from the Manife City Manager. Plan move, Manife Station 5, response time's going to improve. It's going to be interesting, because you're literally going to have two stations right along this main artery. The stations provide resources available to respond to multiple calls, blind structural fires, complex incidents, and just materials, tech, and the rest, et cetera. With the addition of the latter to Manife's complement, that actually steps the game up in your commercial area. So here's the physical impact of staying with the contract. Randy, want to work us through the slide labeled Option A?
Yes, sir. Option A, the 2021 fiscal year is based on an estimate provided by CAL FIRE, showing their staffing costs, salary and benefits, what they anticipate, the cost of operating the station, and then the use of the fire engine. Even though you own the fire engine, they maintain it, and those are the costs that they've allocated out of their budget to this contract. The future years are escalated at a reasonable inflation rate each year, which is what CAL FIRE has typically done. And so the future years go up roughly $60,000 a year, based on those escalated amounts.
Any questions on this slide? If it stays on track to the way they currently, that's the current staffing that you have. Let me clarify. That is the modified staffing program that's currently in place.
Randy, let me ask you, or maybe let me ask you, if, you know, there's rumors of looking at a four-man crew, what's the cost of that if that happens?
We didn't calculate that. The incident, I think there's another rumor that may happen before that one.
Okay. What rumors that, since we're talking about rumors?
Well, we're on the road. We can calculate 4O staffing, however, 4O staffing is negotiated in a contract, as it is with every CAL FIRE. There are some cities that do, in fact, contract 4O.
Temecula is 4O. Temecula is 4O.
Okay. I believe Pacific Road is as well.
Based on their estimate, they're showing three firefighter, two medics, now the cost of three of them is $647,000. So all firefighter twos, two RMs, is $375,000. So you can make an interpolation and get probably close, I think, to what the number might be.
And if you want that, we'll run it and send it in crisp. So...
I have a question. This is Casey.
Go ahead.
Hi. Okay, so in looking at Option A, this looks like it is predominantly labor. If we are renting the fire station and we own the truck, when it says fire engine use and supplies in service, that is, you said the, the department is maintaining the truck even though we own the truck, right?
Right.
Yes.
Okay, so the 25, 800, and going up, is the cost of, like, mechanics, or?
I can answer that, actually. So, even though we own the engine, we participate, it's almost like a side agreement that goes along with the main agreement with the county for this fire engine maintenance. And what it is, is it's, we put aside this $25,000 a year or so every year, and then if our engine ever needs fixing, then the county fixes it, or if it needs a total replacement, the county replaces it at no charge to us. However, at that point, they would own the engine. So this 25, 800 this fiscal year is actually, it goes along with the main agreement with the county, it's actually kind of a separate agreement that we have the option to opt out of, but then if something went wrong with the engine, we'd be out of pocket there.
So it's like a maintenance retainer, essentially?
Yeah, the equipment replacement program, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
So, as I transition to the next option, this just came up. Almost all municipal fire departments run a three-platoon system. CAL FIRE runs a two. So Murrieta runs a three, every fire district I know, every city department runs a three, CAL FIRE is pretty much the only one that lasts, running a two. And they've been doing that for a long time. The way they can do it is they're running 72-hour shifts. So, this is no secret, for years, as CAL FIRE has moved forward with rebranding and trying to step alongside their municipal brothers and sisters, there has been discussion of potentially aligning with that shift structure. Whether or not it's going to happen, I don't know, but the reason I shared that with you is because this option is based on a three-platoon system. So it allows you to exercise a significant degree of control over your finances. We'll go over this figure in just a minute, I want to hit a few key points first. This is the proposed makeup, it's very lean. We run in less than 800 calls a year. So what we have costed out in this particular option, to get you started, is a fire chief, administrative assistants, administrative assistant, because the paperwork side of our business is a bit heavy. Once you transition to your own fire department with a three-platoon system, your finance department is going to need somebody on the fire side to look at time cards, et cetera, and help them work through the nuances of FLSA. The administrative captain, some people will say, "Well, why not the Italian chief?" You're running a machine here. Administrative captain will support the chief in the areas of training, record-keeping, and support duty as needed. Each shift we're recommending, different than what you currently have, is a captain. This is a traditional model. Captain, engineer, and firefighter paramedic, or any mixture there with paramedic, as long as somebody on the engine that day is certified to provide man-made support. And then Randy's recommended a, what we call a floating suitcase person, an unassigned engineer, preferably one that's certified as a paramedic, help fill overtime, help fill vacations. That will only go so far. Remember, in your first year of startup, there's not going to be a lot of vacation taken, however, it will start to accumulate.
Are you explaining why there's an administrative captain? Is that for vacation and travel, or?
The administrative captain is basically your training officer. He helps keep the records. When you have an advanced life support system, there's an immense amount of documentation that has to take place, and because we're recommending it be a captain, he can also assist with response to major events when the chief is not available.
So the administrative assistant is done, this is a question, not a statement, is have, cover the reporting and the management of the aspect versus the administrative captain who's done for training and things like that?
The administrative assistant is the office person.
Okay.
Okay. So, as a former fire chief, my administrative assistant helped me with budget, helped me with project funding orders, helped interpret issues, helped interpret stuff back and forth, finance people, and HR. Pretty hard to run a department without. I'm fond of saying, my administrative assistant was actually a fire chief, because she was so worth it.
Okay, but you clarified for my, because I didn't understand why you had administrative captain, and now it makes sense.
It's on a 40-hour shift. And if need be, the model could work, or that person could plug in, but it's going to run you both overtime, then.
Are we talking about a 56?
No, the administrative captain's a 40.
No, no, the shift personnel.
Yep, 56.
56 with FLSA back pay.
Right, so per FLSA, and a portion of this is negotiable as you want. 1985, FLSA changed the rules. So we went from 56 before you get time and a half, actually, it was straight time, before you get time and a half, to 53. Now, we actually bargained...
Hey, Kurt, Kurt?
Yeah.
Kurt, can I break in for just a second? If you can ask people that are not speaking to mute their phones, there's a lot of feedback on the system right now.
Okay. So, in 1985, they changed the system. First, they went to a 40-hour, and then the West Coast negotiated to 53. So per the Fair Labor Standards Act, anything over 53 hours is time to happen. Now, it comes to the negotiation, is what factors in there, such as sick leave, vacation, et cetera, and that's negotiable, in black and white in the Fair Labor Standards Act.
Correct, but it's also depending on the classification of the employee, whether they're exempt or not.
Right.
And that means their staff is usually not exempt, or exempt, meaning that they don't get FLSA because they're salaried.
Yeah, your fire chief's not going to get FLSA. The administrative captain...
Probably will.
It depends on the test. There's actually a test within Fair Labor Standards Act. Now, different than what you currently have, you've got a modified program. We are recommending a captain on every shift. And the reason we're doing this, so the system you have now has two captains, right? One captain. So when that captain's not on, then an engineer moves up, and then they bump up the firefighter or have you. Because this is an extremely lean system, we're recommending you have a fully qualified captain on every ship. Why does that make a difference? Makes a big difference when you're setting the stage for a successful event. Captains have more experience in command and control, more experience in the incident command system, and they can take on a different level of responsibility. That's extremely important, because you're so thin at the top, but just a fire chief and an admin captain. We also recommend a reserve firefighter program be created, and it would be drawn from throughout the area. We would not recommend you confine it to the city limits, because I believe you have potential candidates outside the city. If you're required, this is, these are key points. If you're required to meet all of the equivalents of firefighter one in a minimum, same thing as your full-time employees. It's preferable that these individuals have prior fire management training or experience, and that there's certs, certifications in place. You may have some retirees in the area that went out of 50 that are qualified for the program. A report says six, I recommend four. I also recommend that be made very clear, this is an augmentation, not a replacement. There's another community that's kind of gotten in some debate about using auxiliary reserves in place of full-time people. You need the augmentation. So as an example, they've got experience, we're recommending a very successful reserve program to actually assign the shifts, to assign them X amount of hours a month they must work to remain qualified, and they use them as the fourth person. Or, or, pinch, to staff quicker, I recommend that. Never to augment before, I mean, never to replace your program. So, yeah.
Have you looked at other candidates? How many programs have you assigned, how many do they use?
I used to run this one. Yeah, it was my feeder program. Between my floor program and my reserve program, it was the feeder program from this old kind of people, and you can well imagine, we had a pretty good look at it by the time we had it.
And Kurt, we've got that program in place here in Tomball also. That's how we've built the entire system.
The department I just left a year ago. When we put this program in place, we negotiated with our HR department, where our auxiliary or reserves, that additional points on the testing process, we must have some candidates. Admittedly, for the younger folks, you're going to be giving them an opportunity to work in a fire department experience, and they may very well go. Pardon me? Yes. That was one of my requirements, absolutely.
Well, when we looked at it three or four years ago, we had... Well, when, when we looked at it three or four years ago, we had a lot of, of, uh, fire, fire, uh, fire, uh, experience, but they were retired, and they weren't, they had the standards and, and everything you say about their capabilities and training, but they're retired, they didn't want to work. And to find people that were going through the academies like, like, um, Larry says, or finding people that got some experience but want to get into reserve, we struggled on that.
One of the recommendations we just made, uh, from another department just across the state, is they, they take a look at incentives, such as incentivizing the reserves as they're going through the cap. In my case, I signed on for the proxy. We made sure we provided all their protective gear, they have something they're breathing after hours. That's an incentive that the academy charged extra money for them. So their program's out. Uh, there's another program, excuse me, that's not in here, for most folks that jumped on to fire. It was much redesigned years ago, Randy and I were on the team, uh, with many other folks that did it. It's called the Fire Corps Program. And the Fire Corps Program designed in California, basically designed, including job changes and expectations. Somebody walks up to your station, to your city, and says, you know, I really want to do something with the fire department, but I don't want to fight fire. In my case, my back's too bad, and my brain thinks I'm younger than my back. So, you go to the Fire Corps list of stuff, and go, oh, yeah, we, we need one of these. We need, we need something to keep up with. We need somebody to be the historian. In addition to setting the department up, people, we're recommending a purpose of type one to replace your thirteen-year-old engine that has an excess of one hundred and ten thousand miles, which is an interesting dynamic from a logical perspective. I get it, it's thirteen years old. You already know you're running seven to eight hundred calls a year, but it's got one hundred and ten thousand miles on it. So it, it needs to go into reserve status. In, in a system like yours, you're getting right there at that point where you want to push it in. Fully equipped, you'll see in the finance that Randy's going to walk us through, this is an extremely efficient way to get started. You don't burn up, you're reserves, you reserve money. You get into a capital lease program. Randy and I are on the same page on these, we never recommend longer than a ten-year lease on an engine. It allows the current engine to go to reserve status, so now you've got a nice reserve, and you lease it fully equipped. So now you've got a fully equipped company and a fully equipped reserve, so there's no change in your equipment. The wildland risk you have, obviously, the contract with CAL FIRE gives you a lot of resources for it. However, you need to address that in your comp. And we're recommending a type six, what we call a quick attack, brush rate. They're extremely versatile. You can actually set them up to run medical calls, light cutting rescues, light initial attack. Actually, the state is going, is buying a full fleet of these type sixes to augment their ones and their threes. If you get something in that BLM area or that little pocket that's actually yours, the duty crew moves over to type six, and it's a sweet initial attack, they'll beat up the type one. Or, the type one's out, and the others. Yeah, I know this font's a little small, I apologize for that, but there's some detail in there we believe is important to watch. Randy, we're going to go through, uh, option B spreadsheet.
Okay, um, we used Calamasa as the, uh, uh, comp to, to build the, the cost of the salaries and benefits. Supplies were similar in nature to what, uh, the CAL FIRE proposal was, and then various services. So we, um, uh, the first year is when we also acquired the two apparatus, which is why you see a million one fifty-eight capital expenditures, offset by a million ninety-five, six eighty capital, uh, lease, uh, funding. Total annual expenditures at first year, the twenty twenty-one year is a million two seventy-seven, again followed by, uh, normal, uh, inconsistent, uh, uh, escalations of about three percent on the costs.
So.
Thank you.
What I also recommend is standardization. So when you go to buy that type one, take a look at what you're around the area is buying, see if you can do a buck. I believe that Riverside County is being ready to buy five grand type ones. So there's a potential for you to find a little better pricing. Nice thing about jumping on somebody else's bid, you can still do some level of customization. You may not need everything they got. Yeah? Randy, did you hear the question?
I, I, I didn't.
Yeah.
Can you hear me now? I'm sorry, my mic was off. I've just, I'm looking at total comp in, in, to get the total picture of it, but you asked, answered the question because I wanted to know how the baseline salaries were established, so you use Calamasa. Okay, because I did some salary comparisons, uh, obviously in the region, and these are extremely different compared to our neighbors. So I'm looking like for like, but understanding how it was established. I'm also looking as being an administrator, total comp meaning what's it cost me for a captain, total benefits out the door.
Randy?
Okay, uh, you are not required, uh, through a, an agreement you've already got with, uh, CALPERS, to, uh, include your firefighters under a CALPERS contract, which leaves you open to, uh, develop your own pension program, which would, I would anticipate be significantly less than a, a CALPERS contract.
Randy?
Which is why the benefits, uh, which is why the benefits look, uh, significantly lower than what your competitors would have.
Okay. That, okay, I, I got that part, because I, I did see that we've got the exemption and understanding. I'm just looking at the, at the bottom line here. And then there is one item that is not reflected in your budget. Because of Riverside County, and if we do EMS, we have to have a medical director. We do not use county health here. Most cities have either a contracted physician on staff to do CQI and a QA and other stuff, which we'll have to do to be in compliance with RIMSA. And so those are things that we'll have to have the management tools for those. So, yeah.
So part of the, part of the process, should you move forward, is the negotiation.
Uh-huh.
Uh, some agencies, depending on their size and the willingness of the medical director, actually share the medical. Obviously, it's a cost share, or there's some incentives. We did identify the need of a medical director. We did identify that you're going to have to fly to the county, you're commissioned to carry drugs, et cetera. There are undoubtedly some unknowns.
Okay.
There's some things that we could not flesh out, because we're not going to go to the table and negotiate. Well, it's not our position to go to the table and negotiate, but there's no policy.
Sure, understand.
Policy.
Understand.
Did you get your answer?
Yes.
I, I got a question. With this proposed budget, is the buffer fee included in this?
The what?
The buffer fee. The fee that we have to pay, I know Calamasa pays, I think it's, I want to say one seventy-five or two hundred to get coverage in their outlining areas.
Are you talking about the wildland agreement?
Yeah.
I believe that's included in services.
So.
Let me look.
So we'd ask CAL FIRE for a costing for cooperative wildfire agreement, and we couldn't even remember.
That's what I thought.
So, that would be an added cost.
That's not in, in this number here, because it's pretty substantial.
Let me jump in here real quick, because I had this conversation with Chief Barnett on the, on this, on this topic. And we've been asking for that and not receiving it from, from the county. And, uh, he was in my office one day, and I asked him about it, and he said, yeah, he said, we, I ran up the fly pool and asked for that, and it, it came back, and, and the higher-up said, we, we don't think we want to do that, because we don't think it's necessary.
Interesting.
Um, most of our wildfire areas, you can see on the map there on the screen, are, are the BLM land. And so, BLM is already responsible for those areas, and the BLM has an agreement with CAL FIRE as well to help with those areas. So, as I understand the chief's response, they didn't want to give us a number because they didn't feel it would be necessary.
And when we looked at land ownership? What I talked about was, if I was going to negotiate, that's exactly what I'm saying. So if your land deals, what kind of a deal you want to cut us for additional cap? They already had a deal with the CDF, or IDC. We've only got a very small piece of, uh, should be of the type of professional tech.
Did, uh, did CAL FIRE, when you guys talked to them, were they receptive to a cooperative agreement or specialized equipment, such as hazmat? Those items that we will not, as a one-horse station, be able to supply? Truck service, something that would be in addition to a normal response if we needed it?
I did not look at county-wide hazmat agreement.
Okay.
There is potential that upon request, if you respond, there could be a cost.
Sure, I, I mean, that, that's a normal system, you know, either you in the system or you're going to pay for the service.
However, based on my experience and some of the teams I've put together, or courses I've put together, about ninety percent of the hazmat incidents have to pay.
Sure.
So if you want standby service, yes, that would have to be negotiated. If you want ladder truck response that's owned by the city of Manifin, that would have to be negotiated. When you're doing your automatic aid, you're doing run cars. It may have to be a special order. Mutual aid is not normally, uh, payable, as you, as you know.
The other question that I had, um, is our, is a dispatch component in there?
It's, it's, it's in here. That was enough since we're on that. Uh, I, and that's a good sell, that's a good amount. I mean, that's a, looks like a fair amount for twenty-four-seven dispatching.
It does.
What is the total on it?
It's one hundred and...
One hundred and four thousand?
One oh four or five, one hundred and four thousand, five hundred and some.
I would recommend you put some performance in that, if you're going to.
Absolutely, and I'm wondering, uh, because I've had the same frustration as you guys did because of how they do their call processing and call taking, and how they account, account for their time slots, because they don't. But also, they don't use system management either. So there are some, there are some system changes that could be done. We're too small to make that happen for them. But, uh, I think on our end, if they do our dispatching, I would want to make sure that we have the right support. MDTs, are we going to use their GEO file, or are they going to charge us for it? Who's going to do our FSOs, which is fire station orders? Uh, if they're going to leave that to us, then we have to have cooperative agreements, because we can't build an FSO without somebody saying, we'll come. So, um, I mean, there's a lot of things that go with this when we.
In a perfect world, the run cars won't change.
Sure, that would be perfect if they allow that.
Yeah, however, there's another option as an negotiation with, uh...
Marietta? The other question I had, will they allow us or allocate us a frequency on their band to be able to be utilized, or we have to have our own?
Negotiated.
Negotiated, so there is really no, when I say the comm side of it, I don't know if we're, whether I'm on eight hundred, nine hundred interoperability or not.
Well, that's always my concern, is interoperability. Again, it's negotiated. The proposal they gave us.
Okay.
Was basic copy.
Okay.
And we were glad to get, we were glad to get that.
Okay. Because I know Calamasa had and has problems, um, with the comm center, and now they're looking to do their own. I would just want us to be upfront to understand that they don't get us so far out on the limb, and then all of a sudden say, oh, oh, by the way, your MDTs, uh, we're not going to support them, we're not going to support your backbone, um, so.
Right now, in that proposal, everything stays like the like.
Like the like, okay.
However, as we're negotiating, everything like is negotiated.
Now, your option plan has four capital investments, right? A new fire engine, the type six quick attack, two staff vehicles, and a hundred and five thousand for the radio system, correct?
Potential hundred and five thousand for the radio system.
Okay, so Chris, have you had a look at, somebody's going to have to pay, or it's over ten, ten years? How, had, had, an effect it has on our general fund?
Well, that, that's included in these numbers here.
It's an annual, it's an annual cost.
Right.
And you, you amortize it out. What you're doing is you're getting the, you're getting a piece of equipment, and instead of paying it all upfront, you've got it ten years out.
Right, right.
So you're doing it that way.
Next time, the capital is.
Yeah, so.
So it doesn't affect the general fund?
Well, a whole nother discussion that, that we'll have to have another time is...
My assumption is year one, we're, we're ramping up. In that year, we're also still contracted with, with the county.
Right.
And so, we have our two-point-two-million-dollar contract with the county, but at the same time that year, we're spending one-point-two, one-point-three million dollars on startups. So that's where we have to figure out, how do we handle that with the general fund?
Okay.
I had a brainstorm looking at the numbers and just going along here and thinking about deployment models. Obviously, we, we've gone in one model forever, one device, that's all. We obviously have an opportunity to change that. The type six and the type one, with its tier, with a four-oh staffing, gives us a lot of versatility.
Does, we're being very careful to demonstrate like for like.
Yep, and I think like for like, it's got to be, or we won't get an auto-aid agreement, period. Uh, they'll slam the door on us. That includes, and we've already talked about this with the city manager, when we talk about like for like, we're talking about the same certifications, the same. They look the same, they do the same, they walk the same. It's a firefighter, a certified firefighter in the state of California.
And like for like, they're paid people on, on the.
Correct, because they will not mix and, they don't like mixing.
And, and, you know, there's a case study going on right now that went haywire, because they tried to do some mixing, and it's not going well.
Yeah.
You can get creative. And one of our charges was alternative plumbing models. The challenge is, number one, your call lines not that high. From a risk perspective, even though you're almost all EMS, you still have what we call an all-risk. So maintaining the level of service that's like for like, so you get that out of the K, is extremely important. Now, with the logic, I showed you the data of time of day, day of week.
People in, people in staffing?
Yeah, people in staffing, staffing, quick attack, staging it down in, in the area where you're the busiest on the busy days. I've made that recommendation multiple times.
I don't think the IAF would like that.
I actually recommended that, and I got support from pilot in another very large controversial city.
With people in staffing, it's been a lot, a lot of models, not in fire models per se, in EMS models.
Right, and, and actually, the fire service started the design of system status, I can hate this.
Yes.
So.
I, I would like to just make a couple of comments. I've got a stage quiet behind this mask up till now, and I probably, Larry should probably help with some of the answers. What I, what I've been looking at on the models, the model A and the model B, in every, every category, ends up with about a million-dollar savings, uh, if we have our own fire department. And yet, I read that, uh, well, the level of services provided by the Riverside County agreement cannot be duplicated through the development of a Canyon Lake fire department. I understand that. And there are other things that, uh, standalone fire department cannot act, cannot economically operate, provide for Canyon Lake for the same level of response times. And I'm, I'm not quarreling any of this, I'm just asking, what are we not seeing? What, what, what could I hit us, what costs perhaps? That are not included in this, this is always a surprise, like being. That are not included in this, this is always a surprise, like being low bidder, you know, until you find out what's not included. And I understand these are conclusions and recommendations and I'm not quarreling that. I mean, I've listened to fire department presentations, you know, for several years here. I just want to be sure that I understand, what are we not seeing here, if anything?
Yeah. And I'll defer to council member agreeing. However, I believe we hit the marks on the high-cost items. Uh, I, I believe the starting point in salaries, um, is can't be debated. Are you going to be able to get everybody at that low step? No, probably not. Not for inexperienced people. So, there may be some adjustments there. There is an unknown, Randy did try to calculate for it. The unknown is the total cost of the alternative retirement system. We know what CAL FIRE's costs. We've done analysis and after-analysis.
And that's why I asked that. Because if you're doing, your biggest bulk is your personnel and your perks and biddies and then the rest of it fits into place. But since we're a standalone, we don't, we have little duplication of effort because we are single. That means air refu, air filling, uh, SCBA's, uh, all the things that you could have system designed for, that you don't have to have everybody have them. And so, we're kind of building a compartment that is standalone and has to have all these components in order to meet OSHA, all the NFPA requirements that we have to go through. And so, I think those are considerations that we have to take into place because we would be the first to be challenged if we didn't provide the proper safety gear, the proper training, require people to have their monthly training, weekly, daily, hourly. So, there are a lot of things that go into this other than the numbers.
Well, yeah, that's the reason that we lean heavily on the administrative cap and...
Sure.
Um, because a lot of those programs do have to be maintained. Uh, you ticked off our bread and butter stuff every day, filling air bottles, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Compliance with NFPA, annual physicals, entry-level physicals, uh, all negotiable. Um, the, the heavy lift, obviously, will be on your new fire chief or your interim fire chief to negotiate deals.
Sure.
Um, there's also, you know, we were kind of kicking around, I, I, I believe after taking a look at all this and talking with Chris and others, there may be an opportunity for a hybrid option. And I actually, years ago, when I was a working fire chief, the previous city manager came up to me when we were leading cities meetings. Uh, my responses was, first of all, I'm going to hook you up with Jackson, the founder of the SDI. And then it's like, why aren't you sitting down with your partners? Because you're surrounded by Elsinore and, and Manife and seeing if there's a hybrid that may work for you.
And there have been discussions.
Sure.
Um, those discussions obviously have been tabled currently because of the current things going on. But there is a desire amongst the cities, um, in our region, um, to have some kind of a western regional approach, which will begin station management, station location, response times, coverage. No one in this area has two-on-one rights, but everybody wants them. Um, so that, you know, I mean, let's just...
They don't have two-on-one transport rights, but the ones that were around in nineteen-eight-five.
Right. But there's very few of those.
Yeah.
And no one wants to take the challenge, but maybe somebody else will change that, but I doubt it right now. So, because we've got competitive private enterprise that's got sole-source bid here, there's no contracting, sole-source.
Yeah. That's, uh, there's, there's another firm that does a lot of work in that area.
So, back to here, I just, I just want to making sure that all of us in the room can understand that you guys have done a great job putting this together. This is, this is a good snapshot. The recommendations flow with the, uh, the reality that we have to do. If we set our own, uh, we have to really have a very seamless, transparent auto-aid system because we can't cover all the calls. Ninety-four's, the front pies right now cover half of our calls because sixty also covers the county area. Uh, so we do have some considerations on response times. If we fall out of, uh, the American Heart Chain of Survival or, or, you know, the time temperature curve and all that stuff that, you know...
Well, this data is accurate there, which is questionable.
Right. Yeah. So, and you've done response model boards, ensuring where response times are based on travel time?
Yeah.
And turnout time?
And, and turnout, because I don't, I'm not sure.
And we don't even have call-taking kind of thing?
Right. No, we do have call-processing time.
You do have that?
Okay. It's a bit long.
Yeah.
You can always improve. So, we always say, um, you can improve on call-processing. You can improve on getting folks out of the station. We never, ever recommend that they exceed the speed of all our models are done at full speed.
I've got a question in regards to salaries. Um, and just being frank, at the proposed staffing salaries that you've recommended, are we going to have an issue hiring people?
I think that's an excellent question. Um, when Randy and I discussed it, we looked at the Cal Mesa model.
Right.
Um, and that's, those are the numbers that are used. We won't know if, if you're going to have a challenge or not. I mentioned earlier, you, you may have to go mid-range. Um, you may have to make some adjustments. We don't know what's going to go, what's going to happen in our industry right now.
Right.
Much less what the competition's going to be. Every time I pick something up, somebody's being laid off or getting a salary cut. So, will the market bear that to be a true amount? I don't know. From a CAL FIRE's retirees' perspective, you've got a different retirement system.
Correct.
So, in the upper ranks, it may be attractive.
Well, eighty thousand for a fire chief for a startup department, that's pretty lean.
It is lean.
That's lean because the tasks that would be in front of that person in the administrative, um, system would be all the SOPs or, you know, I mean, there's a laundry list of stuff you listed here that are tasks that have to be completed before we can go operational. So, it's, it's somebody that would have to have an administrative skill, somebody that would have to already probably have been in the process of a startup or understanding how to negotiate and how to, um, work through process. So...
Could be an interim that's already built.
It could be. It could be. I mean...
That's not, those are, that's a great question. And that's the unknown.
You know, because the, I don't know if you guys took a stab at Cal Mesa's proposed budget moving forward, but now their fire department's up to two-point-two million. Started at the same number that I see in front of me, which is one point four, five. And I know they've expanded their operations and they're looking at doing another station. Um, so I'm just curious if, if their salaries adjusted because of the pull of people that, you know, they had to hire from and if that was a model that you saw over the years.
Randy?
I don't have an answer for that. Uh, I don't know the impact of the, uh, of, uh, the, the new station as far as their hiring, uh, costs. That'll be something that I would have to check in Cal Mesa on.
If I might ask, Randy, the salary figures that we're looking at that were based on Cal Mesa's salaries, are those their current-day salaries or is that when they, when they started? That's when they started?
Uh, we've got the, uh, twenty-eighteen and then also the twenty-nineteen, uh, uh, compensation report, uh, from the state comptroller's office.
Okay. Okay. Because I, I do know that, um, you brought up a good point. Their budget, which was real attractive at the beginning and they encountered other problems along the way, which would probably be very similar to us, uh, things that, like communications. Everybody cutting auto-aid off.
Yeah.
So, there's a lot of other secondary things that occurred that were, um, related to their ability to, to give adequate coverage. So, now they've had to expand their operation to get enough equipment on scene to cover their initial responses, uh, because they are short on auto-aid. Mutual aid can come all the way from the desert and from here, that's a long run and that would kill us. Uh, so, these are conscious decisions that we make and, uh, because I wouldn't want to prove a, let's say, fourteen, one million, four hundred dollar budget and then two years from now, we're up at two, two million and four, you know, so those are concerns.
There are, there are always unknowns.
Right.
Right. If you do a budget, there's an unknown.
That's the question I was asking.
The IAF exercises is interesting.
Yes.
You know, the one thing, the one thing that the COVID-nineteen might be, uh, doing for you also is actually increasing your pool of available candidates. If any of your local jurisdictions are suffering layoffs or anybody up and down the coast are suffering layoffs, uh, you might be able to pick up some good firefighters.
Yeah. You know, that's, that's a good point. I was thinking the same thing and, and again, you know, the, the big reason why Cal Mesa's fire department grew so much too is they're going to double population in eight years. So, they have a tremendous amount of growth happening right now with new homes being built. Um, so they're going to have the tax revenue to not only, you know, take care of that increase, but they made the decision, you know, themselves because of it. But Larry brings up a very good point. They had mutual aid with UCAIPA and they, they shared in a street legitimately on, on one side and, and they pulled it. So, they had to make, um, had to make some serious decisions in that regards. But, you know, we don't have some of those, you know, we're maxed out here in Canyon Lake, so we don't have some of those growing pains that they currently have. Um, I do know that the hardest, you know, Chris and myself sat down, my dad's on the city council, so I get all the inside scoop in, in that city. And, um, one of the biggest things was developing a program where their chief, that's probably the most important thing, that they, you know, will agree that they've done is finding the right person that wants to take this thing and, and go all the way with it. Um, I'm just curious. I don't think ADK is going to do it, just my opinion. Um, but, you know, obviously, we can have those conversations moving forward and...
We've got other stuff to, to talk about. This is a, this is a framework.
Right.
This gives us, um, because I, obviously, I've got things that would, anybody that's been on this side of the house can see it. Um, and so, I just, I'm glad that everyone here has looked at this and, and we have talked about this, about what road do we want to go down. One of the things that we have talked about and are really steadfast on is like for like. We have made contact with our board of supervisor and as long as Canyon Lake maintains like for like, they will require the fire service to, uh, you know, sign an auto-aid agreement. Now, are we going to be able to meet all the demands? I don't know. I mean, one-engine's fire stations are few and far between unless you're in the middle of nowhere.
They're very rare anymore.
Yeah.
Right. And that's, we discussed that.
Yeah.
So, it, yes, we agree, the salary points may be low. Um, but we've tried to look at what's in the area. We're not going to model it to, uh, the area. Uh, it's hard to pay, uh, those wages, it's hard to pay state fees. So, there had to be a starting point.
Sure.
Um, now, Randy's a spreadsheet guy, so we can always plug in a percentage in and run it up. But as you mentioned, Larry, gold comp. Once you run salaries up, it, it can cause these, um, roll-up strong negotiations. There's other stuff that rolls off salary.
And that's not saying that if we had our own, they get, they get a, they want to start negotiating a contract versus a set salary, which I saw you guys applying in a set salary increase for every year, most of the time after you get on board. They organize and then whether it's an association or whatever. But, um, could you explain to the, uh, my colleagues, your Vision 2020 models that we understand?
It's community risk.
Yeah, it's community risk and just so that they, I, I know you made reference to it in the document.
I should add, I guess...
So... It's okay. Just, I just, it doesn't have to be an in-depth, it, I, this isn't, we're not on a quiz or anything. It's just so that everyone understands because other people know.
It's a shift from prevention.
Right.
So, the Vision 2020 is a national focus on developing a, a community that is fire prevention, life-safety oriented. So, in order to help reduce pain, suffering, medical, fire, hazardous materials, incidents in homes and businesses, you got to educate and train the community members to be safe. And so, Vision 2020 gives you a lot of tools to help you deliver those programs and education models to your community members of all ages, starting from very young all the way up to your elderly, elderly care facilities, business communities. Um, and it, it helps re-educate your community. When you do that, it begins impacting your call burdens. So, people begin to act safer. People begin to reduce the risk of lighting the barbecues underneath their patio systems. They know, oh, that's going to be a fire problem potentially. I'll move it away. Less fire calls. Medical-wise, if you can put, uh, continuous chest compression education to the community, your survival rates increase from cardiac arrest instead of the old CPR premise that we did for breathing systems. So, the Vision 2020 takes it, uh, just a multitude of levels higher to take your community and, um, its survivability as well as livability to the next levels.
Did this come from the ICH's or do you have part administration?
Um, it's, Vision 2020's been around for a lot of years with the Chiefs Association, medical groups.
Okay.
Uh, the US Fire Administration, on and on and on. So, a lot of partnerships.
There's actually a class that was founded at the National Fire Academy that shows students how to transition from the traditional fire prevention model to the community risk model. Uh, and all those components that Jeff laid out are part of an action that two people of us, they came back, started studying that program.
Good. I, I just wanted it because they may have saw it and just wanted to read this.
Okay. So, any other questions before we go to the...
Just the one comment I wanted to make. I know that we put a, just in case, you know, in there, a line item. So, currently with the new, um, year moving forward for Cal Mesa, their dispatch bill is actually two oh five. So, it's actually a hundred thousand dollars more than what's proposed. I believe so. Um, I think when they started their program, and I'm finding out right now, it was roughly one-ten to one-twenty. I'm going to get confirmation on that, but as of right now, it's two oh five. So, I just don't know if, I don't know how that works, right? I don't know if that was done at the negotiating table if, because, you know, they weren't meeting, meeting certain like for likes, so they got punished for it and they have to pay more for dispatch. I'm not sure.
Dispatch is typically driven by, so my question would be, what's their call volume?
It's pretty close to ours.
Below eight hundred?
Um, it's just a little bit above.
I believe if I remember right, we, uh, we'd had a conversation, uh, with CAL FIRE and this number has come from CAL FIRE.
Okay. But, but normally, sometimes comm centers negotiate call volume, uh, population and some other criteria to come up with a set amount. Um, I know Metro in, in Orange County, that's how they operate for the cities that are in that comm center.
So, in Riverside, the county runs your dispatch center with CAL FIRE supervising it? And this number was derivative of CAL FIRE asking the county what your dispatch cost would be and that's the county's budget.
I, I think what Councilmember Smith said, saying that Cal Mesa started with a number very similar and has doubled now.
Yeah. I don't know the drivers to that.
Yeah. And I mean, because you brought up some good points, population, we got them by five thousand. The only thing that they got us on is geographic, but it's not by much.
No.
And so, the call volume, I know it's right around the same too, so I'm just curious on, you know, I just wondered...
I've, I've got a, uh, an estimate from CAL FIRE, uh, uh, number of stations, one, estimated call volume of eighteen, uh, direct connectivity charges, uh, total estimated annual cost of a hundred and four thousand, five oh eight.
Good. Thank you.
Good change.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
It's just a lot of...
It's a big, it's a hundred percent increase. It's crazy. All right. So, should the city decide to do its own fire department, you ask for a transition plan? So should the city decide to do its own fire department, you asked for a transition plan? I know a guy who put a transit transition plan together. I've done one as well with my fire department, and so we built one for you. So it's all in place. There will be some curveballs that will be tossed to the mayor in chief or without a fire chief when they are in place that they'll have to adapt and improvise to, and working with the city manager and council to address those things. But we think we covered a lot of those bases in that plan. The plan includes the organization, the capital assets, acquisition of equipment. As noted in the report, the county suggests that all the equipment on the engine that you own is your equipment. You paid for it over the years through your assessments, and that would not be a cost too. Adding a new engine and equipment would be a cost too. Human resources, you're going to essentially double your staff in the city central, if not more, by adding a fire department. So human resource needs will increase. Finance, risk management, the legal premise, the technology to stay ahead of it, battling with the county systems that you have, but also your internal systems, and then developing and maintaining your external relationships.
Thanks for the question.
So with that transition, you know, we talked a little bit about the year, I guess it'd be 2021, having Cal Fire and our model starting to work. How would that work as far as calls? How would that work as far as the two working side by side out of one station?
So there's a break, there's a point where they turn off and you turn on.
Correct.
You don't run a simultaneous response system. So a transition plan like this normally takes a year, and that's working on. So I know you have to, I don't remember what it is, Chris. So in essence, you would say, you would make a decision on this date. By this date, we want our department up and running. Backwards 12 months, that's how the transition plan is designed. I've unraveled the contract in the past. 12 months is tough, but it could be done. So let's use Manife as an example. July 1, Rips Mechanic Sheriff's not providing service. Manife's new police force is on the street. And that's exactly the way, if you move that direction, that's exactly the way you want to do it. All the transition will be done. Your people will be in place. You're going to want to bring them on a week or two earlier to go through training, to go through SOPs, but they will not be responding to calls.
Do you know if the sheriff's department in Manife was operating out of the same office that the new PD is operating out of?
I would say no.
That's my question. So you have one station here in Canyon Lake, and you have a new, you know, group coming in, you know, learning the facility, learning the community while an existing fire department is in place. It's going to be a little tight.
It'll probably have to stay overnight.
Yeah. So part of that relationship piece is working with Cal Fire should you decide to go in this direction that we're going to have a transition degree for training people, educating people, getting systems set up and people set up. And that during the work hours of the day, you're going to see some people running around through the fire station that will be the firefighters coming in, a time certain from the point of start date. And that is what I've seen and experienced, a process that it's handled quite well with adults. We manage it and get it done. I would tell you that Cal Fire is positioned, in their conversations that I've had with them, that should the city, Canyon Lake, decide to go on their own, no one's going to lose a job, so everyone will be placed in other places. So I don't think there's going to be a lot of hard feelings of displacement, other than it's the fishing station that goes away.
Well, Cal Mace had to take all of their personnel, and they couldn't find a location to do all the training they wanted to do. So they ended up negotiating a deal in the desert, and they sent everybody up there for two weeks to become familiar with each other, to become familiar with how they could operate the SOPs and just personal relationships. And then when they implemented, they brought them back, and that day, they went on shift. So what they couldn't find, like Crafton Hills would not support them to allow them to train their personnel on their fire ground. So it was another issue that they worked through. Fortunately, they were able to get, I forget the name of the school out there, out by Barstow, or not Barstow, Victorbridge. Yeah. So, and there is some dynamics going on, and sometimes they come in unusual ways. I know from the recruitment standpoint, a lot of people put that if Cal Mace guys got hired by Cal Mace, they'd be blackballed, you know? That all is not going to come about because once they get experienced and they're able to perform and move on, they will, or they won't. But, you know, it's just a dynamic that we just have to be realistic about.
And I agree. And I think to that end, there are options not too far away to have the crew do their training. It doesn't have to happen at the station.
Correct. I mean, we could even, I mean, somebody's got, I think Marietta's got a live fire. I've got access to live fire. So it's just a matter of knowing the right person to get the right deal and having the right liability so that somebody doesn't get hurt.
In Jeff's discussions, it seems like Marietta is more than...
Marietta is a friend. I have a question. Let's say tomorrow I get fired. The city council says, you know, "We're really impressed with your presentation. We'd like to hire you as the city manager."
I did.
And your first task is to start a new firefighter. What worries you the most?
What worries me, okay, so what worries me the most is finding the right person. The other thing that always worries me is the political support. I have said year after year after year, if I don't have the support of the manager, the person I'm working for, if I don't have the support of the council, or when I was a fire district chief, if I didn't have support from the board, I could do nothing. So that's my biggest concern. And if you were interviewing me for this project, which you won't, but it'd be fun. That's exactly what I would ask. Okay, I can do this. I'm going to give you my resume to prove to you I've done it before, and I need to know that you've got my back, the council's got my back, because all the reasons that some of you have pointed out, the dynamics are going to be interesting. And I'm hoping the numbers work.
Details.
Yeah.
I do believe the numbers will be tweaked. It's inevitable. You start with a baseline, and you come into...
They have to be tweaked next door. Actually put me on the spot. That's all we've got. Thank you again for letting us do this for you. It's a perfect note, but looking at some of the past work, this compares real closely right up there with a lot of our top-notch projects, including some consolidation stuff. This is the brand. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks, Randy.
Thank you, everybody. Yes, sir.
Council, any more questions?
I'm not playing.
I'm telling you, man.
No.
It's perfect.
I have a job. I have a life.
See, the thing that jumps out at me, of course, is the staggering figure of salary. It's such a tremendous difference. And I understand, you know, I don't want to trip my own horn, but I was chairman of our union labor negotiating committee for management for 25 years, and I've seen what happened over the years, the salaries and what have you. Certainly, this is a comfortable position for us to be in, a million dollars in our pocket to start off with. Hey, I think that's terrific. I just was a little concerned about, as Larry just mentioned, some of these figures are going to change. And I don't mean that you haven't done a good job. You've done an excellent job. This is a wonderful presentation. I'm all for and have been for the years that have been on the council to have our own fire department. And I have to defer to you, Larry. I'm just an old contractor. I don't know that much about fire departments, startups. I do know about salaries, but it's not the only expertise I can have, so I would reply. Larry, you've always been very instrumental in getting together now.
I do have one point, because I do read everything. On page 133, just look in the report. I think it's supposed to be Station 60, and it says Station 21.
Hi, Mr. Matt. Thank you, Matt. Two other I'm going to correct.
It's okay.
123.
Yeah. 133. 133. It's okay. I mean, I'm sure there are a few others, but overall, I think it's a good template. It's a good cut for us to have some good dialogue on. I think each of the council members have got a point, and obviously, observations and concerns, which is appropriate, because I think that all of us want to do the right thing, but I think some of the considerations that we have to do is what's the bottom line? And are we positioning ourselves in the right place, or are we kind of creating something bigger down the line that maybe we weren't anticipating? So I think with us going consciously at this, do you want our due diligence to look at and ask more questions? I think we've at least got a template here that can give us an idea. And we do have community around us that does have recent experience. That's it for me. I don't know if we should put the sign off or not.
So I would recommend that the next step be the fire ad hoc committee that was appointed meet to continue the discussion on the study and come up with some potential next steps in this evaluation process.
Contrary to what you said a little earlier, I don't think you need to be concerned about being fired tomorrow. I think according to this, what we need is somebody such as yourself. Says here that the most pressing need is the recruitment of a fire chief. The city should seek a dynamic, modern-thinking leader with energy and capability to develop the organization into a robust, efficient, and effective service delivery system, which kind of describes what we have. We have two, and I'm not stoked with you, but I'm just curious, if this fire chief's salary, $73,000 to $93,000, is that normal? It doesn't sound like we're going to get this description of this person without any...
That's very low. I think the one way we might get it is if we find someone who is recently retired, perhaps from, you know, a different retirement system, and they're drawing a pension. And so this would be on top of the pension that they were already drawing. Always they're not in the purse, and we're not in purse. That gives us a little latitude. I think that would be optimum for us, for somebody with experience. But this particular person, though, has to have a skill set that is different than most line officers. This is an administrative process that they have to go through, which is a lot of tasks. And so they have to be familiar with putting together manuals and tasks and contracts and negotiating and hiring. I mean, that's one big step, just recruiting and doing our backgrounds and things that we have to do just to ensure we've got to connect people.
So you just described what a fire district chief does, different from the city fire chief. Fire district chief is responsible for every task you just laid out. You might look for retirement.
It's going to be a challenge, but it's good food for thought, and I really think it's appropriate for us at this point. I also think strongly, as I made notes about, I think regionalization is a strong point for us. I think we're in the right area at the right time right now, based on what's going on, based on the way the stations are allocated currently by the cities around us and their equipment. They just don't have the personnel. But that's another, that's different.
Was a fire plotted up against Larry in general?
Any other comments from the council? Have they already put the comments on this?
No comments.
Well, I thought it was an excellent presentation. We certainly thank you very much. I know there's a lot more involved in this. Excuse me, this mask was a little hard to talk through. Thank you so much for your time. With that, I think we're going to adjourn this meeting.
Thank you, brother.
At 7:46.